...of divine love. And that love flows through everything we do. It provides the deep and beautiful understandings. It lifts us into wholeness. It provides more than enough for all that we need. And it gives us that great honor of beholding the divine presence in each other. To be in service of this wonderful community of people who are such a blessing to each other and to our world, we are grateful. Amen.
Well, thank you all for coming. Couldn't have this meeting without you. I'm going to tell you how we're going to do this meeting, and we're going to try to make it quick, because that's what we promised. We're going to introduce the board and the advisors. Reverend David has a short report to give. I have a short thing to say. And then what you probably, many of you are waiting for is James has a treasurer's report to give. And then we have our congregational sharing. And we're going to try to keep it moving. I'm going to ask you to hold your questions till the congregational sharing so that we can try to get out of here on time. Okay, let me introduce our board. I'm the president. This is Annie Wave. She's our vice president this year. We're very blessed.[92.22][92.22](Laughter). This is Nancy down here. She's our secretary this year. She takes minutes, which we're going to tell you how to find online in a little bit. James is our treasurer. That's our executive board. Then we have John Rexroth. Been on the board, he said the other day, for 11 years. One of those years was as an advisor, right? Scott Babcock. Bill Schremer. I have Dana Legion, who's not here today. She's singing at, what, a basketball game for her son?[134.38][134.38](Laughter). Yeah. Important family stuff. And this is Javier Cortez. And of course, David's on the board. We have two advisors here today. We have Rob Sidenspinner and Susan Galvin. And we're so blessed. This is such a wonderful board. I feel so blessed to be working with them.[154.81][154.81](Applause). You guys can sit down if you want. Thank you. So David, you want to give us your minister's report?
Okay. Just real quickly, I wanted to kind of bring you up to date on the things that we have been focusing on. All the way back from when we did our 2020 vision. Part of the commitment that we have been working on over these years have been to empower connection into our community. So it starts from, at present time, if you move into this area, you now get four months of delightful mailings from Unity of Walnut Creek that lets you know we're here, that shows the faces of our people, and really invites people to come in and connect with our community. So new people coming into the area know that. We've always had, and we've worked and supported our wonderful greeters and the folks that do our welcome table. And now we've expanded that, realizing that one of the challenges of moving into an area or stepping into a community like this is, here's this group of people that are so connected with each other. How do I connect in? And it's one of the reasons why we now have our connection cards. When people are here, come, we are able to communicate effectively with them. We're able to get them information right away, to invite them to our events, to help them find those ways to get connected into the community. One of those ways that we have begun is the connection classes. Again, different from our classes are, because we have such a love of spiritual learning, our classes are just jam-packed with quality information and experience. The connection classes are different. They're only four weeks. They're really focused on interaction. The amount of material that people are going through is very small compared to a regular class, but the chance to really get to know and have that heart bonding with people is empowered by that process. And that's one of the reasons that we have that. And if you've been here a long time, it's a great thing to come to, because it's a chance to connect into a new circle of people here. So we have our connection classes. We have just started, as we focused on our Year of the Heart, we have just started our Heart First groups. We've had, for many, many years, our Heart Math groups. But these are much more casual, less demanding, easier to connect in and out of than the Heart Math groups. People can be a little more casual in making that connection. And those groups are focusing on the material that we're moving through in the services. So it's a chance to really examine those and support each other in that experience. So these are some of the pieces that we've put in place. We have another, we have an event coming up fairly soon where our people who are running different areas, from the children to the men's group to the choir, whatever it is, are going to be available for folks to find, how do I volunteer there? How do I help in that way? To make those volunteer connections. Because that's another way that people step in. And again, when you have the level of activities that we do, it can be a little overwhelming at folks' time. How do I find that right place? So our goal over these past months, really through this last year, has been to step in and really help support people in that experience. And that's been, in addition to what you see on Sunday, the focus on the heart and inviting people to go to a much deeper level of spiritual experience of the heart. Those have been the major focus of our work. Okay?
Thank you. So we've got some good stuff going on here. It's my turn next. And one of the things that I've learned in these meetings and from our board meetings is that there's information that congregants are curious about, that they don't know that's available online. So I want to tell you how to find that information. The minutes of our board meeting are online. And you find them by going to our Unity Walnut Creek website. In the upper right-hand corner, there is a box that says Unity Connects. And if you go there, go to Groups. There's a tab that says Groups. Choose the Unity of Walnut Creek Groups, which is the very first one on the list. Click on, when you get to the Unity of Walnut Creek's group, give it a minute to upload, because it does take a minute for it to catch up with you. And click on the Files tab. And under the Files tab, you'll find lots of goodies. You'll find our bylaws, and you'll find our general and tithing policies, and you'll find the minutes of all of our board meetings going back to 2008. The board meeting for previous years have been consolidated into one PDF file. So there's a file that has all of 2012. There's a file that has all of 2011. You can find out what happened at those board meetings. A couple of years ago, we started, at the end of the minutes, we started attaching Reverend David's minister report. And on that, he lists the things that we've completed, and the things that are coming up, and what the focuses are, and what we're thinking about. We also have included, attached, the treasurer's report that he gives to us each month. And you can see, you know, what's been going on. You can watch. Now, when we do the minutes, we just had our February meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the minutes are now circulating among board members to make corrections. And at our next board meeting in March, this month, we will approve those minutes, to make sure that they're correct. Once they've been approved, that we know they're correct, then we will post them on Unity Connect. So if you have to know what's going on right now, then you need to go to the board meetings. And you're all welcome. Every fourth Wednesday, except around Thanksgiving and Christmas. And we gather at 6:00. John makes a wonderful dinner for us. We chip in $10. We have our prayer and our blessing at 6:00, and you're welcome to join us and then stay for the meeting. We have congregational input at each of those meetings. And there are a couple of people here that have come, a lot of you that haven't, but you're all welcome. Okay, now, if you're not on Unity Connects, is there anybody here that's not on Unity Connects already? Okay. That's a really good thing to be on, if you want your income tax files. In the bulletin today, it tells, you know, your income tax thing for your donations, a little statement of how much you donated. In the bulletin today, it tells you how to do that from Unity Connects. And if somebody asks you how to get on Unity Connects, you know, you can check a little, check a box on those connection cards that we have every Sunday for you. So that's that. Do you want to tell them about the party in October? Do you want me to do that?
You can go ahead.
Okay. We want to have a party in October for all of us, and we would like as many of you to be involved in the planning as possible. We would like everybody to take part, to make it one of those situations where there are a lot of people, many hands make light work, a lot of people doing a little bit rather than a couple of people doing a lot and burning out and never wanting to do it again. So if you're interested, would you please take one of those connection cards and let us know that you're willing to help out, and what it is that you're willing to do? Did I forget anything?
No.
Okay. So, moving right along, James?
So raise your hand if you didn't get one. Some of us are less professional at handing out than others, so.[786.25][786.25](Laughter). Okay.
All right. So the report this time is a graph. I think it's probably more clear from the graph, there's numbers on there as well, but it shows in an instant what's going on, and trying to make it as transparent as possible. Looking over the first graphs are income and expense for the last 15 months. And I think you'll all be able to see that 2013 was quite a financial roller coaster ride for us. It was, you know, we started out with, you know, expenses exceeding income for the first five out of the first six months. And then we ended up with income and contributions exceeding expenses for the last six months. And you probably already know that, you know, because of the, our situation in the first six months, we made cuts in funding to programs, starting in May. And so you can see that the red line drops down. The red lines are expenses. And about May, it drops down to a lower level, which it's stayed at for the rest of the year, with the exception of December, which we have special services, extra expenses, but we also had a lot more contributions in that month. So in the, you know, blue lines are contributions and income. And you can see about June, we had a shift of our collective consciousness from not enough to more than enough. And, you know, the congregation kicking in and pulling us way up above the expense line and ending up with over a $30,000 surplus by the end of the year. You know, that included an incredible November and December, when we netted over $28,000 from the fall fundraiser. So we're so appreciative to be back in the black. And what we did with that $30,000 surplus is put it in our cash reserves, so we're prepared for whatever ups and downs may come in the future. Our January and February income, looking at the end of the graph, is a little bit low. We're running about a $2,000 deficit the first two months. We're not really having any big concern about it at this time, with all the outpouring of support that we received at the end of 2013. We think it's, you know, it's reasonable to expect it's going to drop off a little bit. People have Christmas expenses to pay for and things, but, you know, so going forward, we're still looking to be in good position. We are holding our 2014 budget at the level where we cut it back in the middle of last year until we see where we're going to be at. So we're keeping it at that reduced level. You can see that the expense line is reduced as well as the income line for the last two months. So we had some minor increases from year to year, but for the most part, we're keeping the budget at that level till we see where we're going. What we'd like to be able to do is to restore some of the funding to the programs that we cut earlier in the year, but we're not going to do that unless there's more than enough coming in to cover that and keep our financial reserves.
James, is there a gray Mercedes and cheerless driveway that's blocking a car that needs to get out? Does that perhaps belong for someone here? Sorry, James.
Of course, one of our board members.[1060.82][1060.82](Laughter). So beyond restoring the funding cuts, our goal would be to complete other projects. There's things that, a list of projects that haven't been completed from the renovation of the church and other things that we want to do. But again, we're going to, you know, take that out of our surplus. We don't need any, we don't feel like we need any more financial reserves at this point, so any surplus we receive going forward is be money available to use for programs or projects. And then at the bottom of the, there's a graph showing our balances, our cash balances and our checking and savings accounts. And I think that's, you know, speaks for itself. You can just see the big dip in the middle of last year and where we're kind of holding steady the last three or four months. Any questions?
How does attendance?
James, let's do the microphones. And if you say your name first.
Lisa. How does the attendance fluctuate? Is there a connection or correlation between attendance and the amount of income coming in each month?
Yeah, there is to some extent. There's, most months have four Sundays. Four times a year, we have five Sundays, so that causes a fluctuation if we have an extra Sunday. There's also periods during the year where attendance is a little bit lower, sometimes in the summertime, and, you know, probably in January and February. So we have a little bit of fluctuation in attendance. For the most part, though, it's, if you average out for the Sundays, it stays pretty consistent, the income and the attendance.
Melinda, thank you. James, thank you very much for the graph. It is a whole lot easier to read than anything else, so thank you for doing that. My question is, are we planning to do any kind of, I don't know if I'm even going to say this correctly. As we did, Reverend David, help me out with this, as we did in, when we did our remodeling and whatever, we did the Love in Action. And that was all about changing our consciousness, not about tithing and not about, let's raise money. It was about changing what was in our heart. And my question is, are we considering doing something like that this year around our consciousness, around money?
Several things that are ahead. One, this next class series that we have, Ginny and I have put together an entirely new prosperity spirit, designed to really help people go in depth through a shift, so that for those who really have the idea, or the heart's desire to step in and experience a major change there, we've got a wonderful program in support for that. One of the things that we're doing now is really looking to see, what is the new level of giving that we've established? And part of that, then, is we're able to identify where we are in consciousness, to work from there. When we saw that our consciousness was running not enough, then we were able to step up and really, really address that. So it shows up in some Sundays during the year and in the class. And then, again, as we go on, there'll be a time this year where we really look in depth at prosperity. We look at our, you know, at our consciousness and where we want to go.
And I may add that, as far as the, ascertaining the level of giving going forward, that's since, you know, 2013 was, had so much fluctuation, that we're kind of looking to see how this is going to balance out. And it's going to be a few more months before we'll have a educated idea of that. Anything else? Thank you.[1357.82][1357.82](Applause).
Yeah. I'm so grateful that James went to that work and gave us those pictures. I like pictures. They really help me. I understand them better than I do the numbers. James, thank you so much, and for being clear. So, this is the part of the meeting where we do congregational sharing. And we're going to ask you to, I will give this to Scott. We're going to ask you to use the microphones, to put your mouth up close so that you can hear, because it's being recorded, and to say your name before you start. Who would like to start? Who has questions, ideas, things they'd like to share? Nobody? Wow. I'm...
There we have one.
I'm, that, yeah. Oh, Ted has something to say.
Hi, I'm Ted Oliari. Thanks for, everyone being here. I've been on the website, Unity Connects, and I've tried to look people up on, you know, there's a way to look people up and, you know...
Unity Connects.
Yeah. But there's no way to get a list of who's who. I mean, if you know their name and their last name, you can type that in and find them. But is there any way you can get like a list of, browse through the congregation and see who's...
A directory?
There is a directory?
That's a directory.
Yeah. Is there?
The Unity of Walnut Creek has all those names and stuff, and I believe you can browse through it. Can you? I'm on, I'm an assistant something or other, and I can do things that other people can't.
I can't, I can't browse through their name. I type in Sappho.
Okay. Ted, did you type in Sappho on the tab that says people?
Yeah, I can find you, but I can't browse through a list of like 20 people. I can't, unless I know their name, I can't look anybody up. I can't see who's in our congregation.
Well, yeah, that's true. If you're, if you're part of a group...
Well, yeah, so I can see who's in the men's group, but I can't see anybody else in the congregation.
That's right, and...
Is there a reason we can't do that?
I thought that we could go through the Unity of Walnut Creek. I thought we could access that and see who's on. No, we can't? Okay.
You can't. So that's a real limitation with that.
What about members?
No, that's not open, and...
I'm wondering if, is it because of privacy concerns, or is it just, we don't know?
I think, I think that it's privacy concerns, because I know that I personally wouldn't want any person who was a telemarketer to get onto Unity Connects and then harvest all of our information. And I think, I believe, is that right, John?
Yes.
Yes. It's, it's correct. So, yeah, you have to know the names, or be a member of a group, or have, be an assistant on a group, which, which board president, I guess, carries with it, but it won't when I leave this office.
I know, a lot of churches will have a book where there's photographed the people with their names.
Mm-hmm, I know.
But we're not, we're not...
That's in our future? To actually have a database is a miracle. It is a miracle that probably took longer than any other miracle for us to manifest.[1582.04][1582.04](Laughter). So, you know, at this point, one of the real challenges is, with this, there are some software constructions in it. It's a program that was really designed for traditional churches. And there are some things in there that don't respond in the way that we like. We have made requests to the software for some changes, which would give us clearer, better options in terms of how to become aware of and connect with each other. And we have not made good progress on that. So we're looking for miracle number two, and hold that with us. We would like it to be more responsive than it is. And, you know, we think we could have some better options that still protect our privacy concerns. But basically, it's going to take some time and persuasive prayer and nagging to accomplish some of those changes.
Well, one thing, one suggestion I have is, we used to have name tags. I don't know if we still do. No, I mean, you could write your name in and...
Yeah. When you, when you come in, there's people at the door.
Okay. Do we have a microphone we can take right here to Kathy?
Kathy? Yeah, I'm curious, you know, when we were building the church, we were all passionate and focused on building the church and our sanctuary and everything. What is this board passionate about doing that we can get behind?[1697.82][1697.82](Laughter).
My personal passion, and I think that a lot of the board shares it, is this is the Year of the Heart. And that was something that spoke to me deeply when it was announced, and it was part of the reason that I said, yeah, you know, I would like to be board president this year. And I would love, I personally would love, to see this place, excuse me, have such loving energy that when you drive into the parking lot, you're hit with it. That's something that I experienced when I was a teenager at a children's camp. Everybody that came there was aware of it. And I would love for this place, by the end of the year, to have that kind of energy that people can feel when they walk in. The other thing that I personally have been interested in seeing happen is that we be, that our finances be transparent and that they be reported to you guys in a way that you can understand it. I think that that's really important. And it turns out that that's not something that you can do in a day. It's a complex thing that apparently people have been working on for years, but I bring the energy and the organizational skills... the energy and the organizational skills that I developed as a teacher of 40 years, and it's important to me. I want us to be transparent. I want people that are sitting in the seats that you're sitting in now and that I'll be sitting in in the future to, to have a way of knowing what's going on and to know. That's why I really want you to, to explore the Board Minutes. There's a lot of information in there. You were asking a question about attendance. Those numbers are in James's report, and those are at the end of the minutes for every single month for the last couple of years. So, you know, take a look, take some time and explore. Annie?
So, I'd like to put a challenge out to everyone that's here, because this is obviously a core group of concerned people that have a deep concern around the church. A little experiment I've tried and Sappho has tried and I think some others, is before we come on the grounds, we have worked in going into our hearts and being in our hearts before we come on the grounds, so when we're here, we can respond in a way that is really meaningful and heartfelt. And what I'm finding is the days that I notice, this is what I've noticed, the days that I actually get into my heart and do that, which is really 95, 98% of the time, I get a different response from people when I'm here. The days like today, I got out of the car, you know, we lost an hour, stumbled in here, I finally had the stage manager, and I was just boom, 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 boom all morning, I didn't get any hugs. I didn't, you know, a couple people offered and I like whizzed past, you know, and the way the world responds to you when you're in your heart is different than when you're not, and we've all experienced it. Sorry, Bill gave me an incredible hug and a couple of...[938.04][938.04](Laughter) Okay.
Okay.
Example, example. And one of the things that I feel that strangers come here, when they feel our heart energy, they may not know what it is, but they'll respond to it. And the heart energy is what brought me to Unity Walnut Creek, and I think it'll bring others too. So, that's a challenge I put out to all of you.
Thank you. David?
Let me, let me just do a, a moment's response to your question. We're, we're looking at this being the first of a series over three years. This is the Year of the Heart. The next year, we take the, the intense healing capacity of the wholeness we develop, and we have the Year of Forgiveness. And it is my intention that while we hold this that deeply, that much of the healing that is, has not yet taken place for groups within our world to find a path to peace, that this will happen because of the consciousness that we lead and hold. And our third year is the Year of Compassion, and in this year, we will be inviting organizations around the world to join us as we focus upon the, the experience of heart compassion, which is, to me, the answer to the questions that we face. There's nothing that we can't respond to if we choose to get off our own agendas and really step into a place of care and compassion for the peoples and the needs of our world. And it's not something that you get by telling people, it's something you get by living. And so, it's, it's our, it's, it's my intention that this is what we're about. We have such spiritual power in this place. We have so many people living at such a deep level of spiritual attunement, of love, of, of abundance and generosity and, and guidance, that the energy that goes out from here, I believe, makes a tremendous difference. So, we're focusing it because these are, these are years when it seems to me our world is, is in need of that going out in a very pure form across the world. Now, with that, getting behind on that mundane stuff, part of our care and part of our heart right now is we aren't taking adequate care of those of us with disabilities. They can't get to that next level. We need to build that lift, okay? For people that have any hearing impairment at all, it's very difficult for our, our meetings in our community room to hear. Again, there are solutions to all of these things that are a part of just fulfilling, part of the vision that we had. But, and so we, we put the first thing in order. We had to get our finances strong and in order. And so, when James was saying, you know, as we see the, our abundance coming in and, and there may be points at which we're guided to say, okay, now let's, let's complete this or let's complete that. So, that's a, that's a potential ahead for us.
Yeah, thank you. David McKibben?
I'm David. Thank you, David, for basically answering my question.[1161.47][1161.47](Laughter) I just was curious, because of the, the wonderful facility we have here, both upstairs and down, that those of us who can't get up there need to find a way. And I know we have talked a lot about putting in an elevator, a scissor lift in the back, but then it sort of disappears from conversations. And I just wanted to know that, that among the other things for those of us with disabilities, being here impaired as well, I know that, that we all are, want to actively participate as much as everybody else is capable of.
And, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And let me say, now we can really begin to address that. And part of it is because of the generosity of everyone here that let us get back to a place of, of financial stability. Because until we did that, we weren't able to, and now we, we are in integrity with, with the banks and what they expect us to have. We're, we're integrity with good financial management, and now we can go ahead and say, okay, we can step forward and see that we, we complete some of these things we've been holding on our heart now for a long time.
Okay. Jan?
I'm Jan. The concept of privacy rang a bell in my mind that I wanted to ask about the Community Connects or Unity Connects. I receive emails through Unity Connects from people advertising seminars and things, and I wondered, I, I was surprised, I've started blocking them, but I was surprised to start receiving them.
Well, I'm surprised to hear that. I've never had any.
We, we haven't had that going on, so please send, send that information to us so we, we can find it. Our folks have been, you know, in, in the groups where you can communicate with others in the group, folks have been very good about respecting that, not overall. We did have some problems and, and we had, had to address them, both in terms of control here and communication with people. But we haven't had it for a while, Jan, so, yeah, let us know so we can look in and take care of it, because that, that really is not okay.
Thank you. Sheila?
One of the things that came up when we came together in the community room as we were introducing the Year of the Heart, and it was not coincidental at all, it was god incidental, that those of us who came together in our group, it was Annie and Kathy Beddoes and a few of us, and we had the same idea. I come from, of all the churches that I've been a part of as in ministry, we have been big outreach churches, community outreach, creating programs that supported our family but also supported the community. And this group, interestingly enough, had the same concept. I don't, I guess there's a reason it's happened to me this year. I have been approached, and it has been referred to me, five cases of homeless women, three of whom were in our congregation. And we have a minimal amount of, of resources to help them, but it's very minimal, and some of us went into our own pockets and helped them have some support for a small period of time. I would like to see us as a community get behind starting our first in-reach and outreach program to help women and children who are homeless as providing resources, perhaps even having congregants who would put a willingness, say, to say, I can take someone for 30 days as they get their resources in line. I can take someone, I have a room someone can use for 60 days or 90 days, or I have an elderly parent, I would love to have someone move in and help with the care of that person in exchange for having room in board. I would like to see us begin something like this. Don't know how, I used to be on the board of Francis House, the Resource Center for the Homeless. I know that piece of it. I don't have the idea of how we begin it, but I would love it if we could begin to put that in our hearts as we're in the Year of the Heart. How can we support this and how can we make it possible for our own congregants who suddenly find themselves homeless to have a handout?
Thank you. Do you have something?
Yes.
David?
Just so that you're aware, we, we have what we call Ministers Fund, which lets us give to, and, and it's for our own people. It's, it's not something where we are at a level where we have been able to respond without, beyond that. But those that financial responses in the nature of $50 or $100, or maybe sometimes a little more than that. So, when someone's in a difficult time, it's, it's, it's a minimal for a moment. We don't have the ability, it's not within our financial structure for something greater. And if, what we have experienced over time is, we've had times when our community was very oriented towards reaching out and helping in the greater community and responding in specific ways. And over the, over the last, I would say, five, six years, I mean, maybe a little less than that, we've kind of seen a pulling in. There's some folks that hold that interest, but there's been very little response in terms of, I will step up, I will put in the time, I will, you know, lead and so forth to accomplish that. So, it, it is, it is a, a potential, and if you're interested, see Sheila. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a wonderful thing to embrace and give and find how we can effectively give support that is real and meaningful. So, I just want to open that door and say, the, the path to it is to connect with Lisa and, or Sheila, and let's see what the response is and how we could go forward.
Okay. It's 1:36. We have, I think, for one more?
Is there one more, one more person that wants to say something? No? Dwayne?
One of the things that maybe I'm dreaming, but one of the things that I have looked at when I was a heart minister and kept trying to, to get across was how many things from county, city, state, federal, that we might be not over, or are overlooking that can give the help that some of these people need. And, and the information, I think information is a very important factor, and a lot of people just have no idea whatsoever where to even begin if they fall in that hole.
And, and Dwayne, just so you're aware, we, we do have regular sheets of information on, on resources that, that are updated, that, because that's, that's true, and just that simple communication can often be a help to someone.
And we did do that, David, in the case of the...
Sheila, could you use a microphone so she can hear?
And, and we did do that in the case of the people who came to us. We helped get them to resources as well. So, we have the foundation for it, but it would be wonderful if we had a group specifically designed to provide the information and maybe some additional support outside of, of what we're able to do with the Ministers Fund.
Okay, last one.
I just wanted to add that recently, I think just in the last few months, there's, if you dial 211, have any of you heard of that? Yeah, you dial 211 and it gives you these resources. So, which is very cool.
Well, thank you. And, and I, I want to thank all of you for, not just for coming, but for being the loving beings that you are and for doing all that you do. I mean, I look around this room and I see people that give hours and hours and hours and hours to this loving place, and I want to say that I appreciate it, the board appreciates it, and I'm guessing everybody in this room appreciates it. So, thank you very much, and thank you for coming, and I think we're ending on time.
So, in closing, God is good.
All the time.
God is good.
All the time.
And all the time.
God is good.
And you are fabulous.
Amen.